All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Major Gazara Hill, Clayton County Police Department. Pastor Hill, please, he'll be followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance from retired Staff Sergeant Bonita E. Crawford, if she is present.
Mr. Chairman, it's his 10th pastoral anniversary, too.
Congratulations, Pastor.
Thank you, sir. Shall we pray? Father God, we come this evening in the name of Jesus. Thank you, God, for this opportunity to be amongst the living and not the dead. We pray, God, that you'll cover these that stand before me with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We ask for protection for those that stand behind me. We ask you, God, to continue to lead us, God, by your grace and your mercy. We thank you, God, that by your grace we're still here, standing on your promises, on your word. You said in your word, "God, let everything that hath breath praise your holy name." And so, God, tonight, we come to praise your name because you're worthy to be praised, and we ask you, God, for your continual blessing and health and strength. We'll be so careful to give your name the glory and the praise. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Sergeant here. Yes, tell her to come forward. She don't have to come all the way up, but you can stand right there, please. Lead us in the pledge.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aye, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 5, 2023, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Commissioner Hamburg. I would like to remove number 6 and put it on the regular agenda.
All right. That's Recommendation for Ward RFP 22-247 Consulting Services for Planning and Zoning. Are you clear on that, Madam Clerk?
I am clear, Mr. Chair.
All right, any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think we...
Commissioner Franklin.
I'm sorry. I believe we all received an email regarding item number 10, I'm sorry, 10, from the board of the library system stating that they would like for us to hold that item as it has not gone through the proper vetting process.
All right, this resolution is 2023-140, authorizing Clayton County through the Clayton County Library System to enter into a memorandum agreement with Clayton County Health District. That's the motion. Is there a second to remove this from the agenda? Is there a second to remove it? All right, well, it fails due to lack of a second.
For note, Mr. Chair, that was an email that we all received from the actual board itself, so I would like for maybe the attorney to just put note on it that the board would move forward to look at it on the agenda, which is not in line with what we received in email per the library board. They just wanted us to hold it so that they can review it and have proper understanding.
You have something to add, Mr. Reed?
No, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think the commissioner stated the purpose in the board, I mean, the motion, you know, was made and failed, so, but the record will show the reason for the motion.
Yeah, it's a basic MOU between the two parties in reference to the teen pregnancy initiative, I believe. Are there any others?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to...
Commissioner Davis.
We moved to the regular agenda, number 4 and item number 7.
All right, number 4, the Recommendation Contract Amendment SS #22-283, Design Build and Locks and Hinges for the Sheriff's Department, number 6.
Number 7.
7. All right, Budget Amendment 2-1, Fiscal Year 24, Building and Maintenance, Properate Funds to Assist with Design, Build and Locks and Hinges for the Sheriff's Office, an amount of $3,644,097. Are you clear, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear.
Any others? All right, here and now, I take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Franklin, any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is a presentation, Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month, Staff Sergeant, U.S. Army Retired Bonita E. Crawford. Staff Sergeant, retired Bonita E. Crawford, was born June 18, 1950. I didn't add your name, I mean, your date of birth or anything on there, I just want to let you know it didn't come. It didn't come from me, all right? In Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. She is the daughter of Oliver A. Thomason, a steelworker at the Edgar Thomas Thompson, rather, Steelworks in Braddock, Pennsylvania, who worked there as a foreman at the steel mill for 40 years, and her mother Gloria Dolores Estella Jackson Thomason, who sold Avon to the local community. Sergeant Crawford enlisted in the United States Army on December 2, 1976, and served on active duty through January 1, 1997, as a chaplain assistant. She entered the military at a time when it was not popular for women to enlist in the old Women's Army Corps, which is called WAC. Her class was the last WAC class to graduate from Fort McKellen, Alabama. She attended advanced individual training at Fort Walsworth, Staten Island, New York, and then began her first duty assignment at Fort McPherson, Georgia. She also served in Youngson, Korea, Fort Gillum, Georgia, Wurzburg, Germany, Desert Storm, and at the United States Army Chaplain Center and School at Fort Mammoth, New Jersey, and Fort Jackson, South Carolina. After returning from military service, Sergeant Crawford obtained a BN, BA in Religious Studies from St. Leo University, Fort McPherson. She then went on to become the Division Secretary to the Dean of, for the Office of Humanities and Fine Arts at Atlanta Metropolitan State College for 13 years, giving back to the community and mentoring students. Sergeant Crawford retired from the college in 2013. Sergeant Crawford currently serves as President for the City of Marlboro Neighborhood Watch Program and as President of the Brookwood Estates Homeowners Association. She is also the Scribe for the Community Emergency Response Team, but known as CERT, for the City of Marlboro. She ran for mayor in the City of Marlboro and despite not being elected, continues to serve the citizens of Marlboro to ensure a better quality of life for all. She also serves as Recording Secretary for the Atlanta Metro Chapter of the National Association of Black Military Women and is a member of the VFW 5080 Supporting Other Veterans Organizations. Sergeant Crawford has a daughter, five grandchildren, and five great-grandsons. Please help me recognize and honor Staff Sergeant Retired Bonita E. Crawford.
Can we get two more? All right. Thank you so much.
Our next item is a proclamation. July is Parks and Recreation Month. This is requested by Parks and Recreation. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Clayton County, they promote health and wellness, which improves the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, Parks and Recreation is the leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. Their programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation will increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, they are essential and an adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoor. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designed July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month. In Clayton County, Georgia, we recognize here in Clayton County the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. I know our community will be enriched physically and socially by connecting with this abundance of resources that are right here in our own backyard. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and cause the sale of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 5th day of July, the year 2023.
All right, is that a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 4, Recommendation for Contract Amendment SS 22-283. This is presented by our Central Services Assistant Manager, Jalise Williams.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Recommendation for the Contract Amendment for Soul Source 22-283, Design Build of Locks and Hinges for the Sheriff's Office. The recommendation is to amend the current contract with Willow Products Company, Incorporated, located in Decatur, Alabama, to build and install wedges at 540 swinging cell doors in the amount of $3,644,097. Funding is available through the Building and Maintenance Department's General Fund. The department's recommendation memo and amendment are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman on his designated need to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is that a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, can we take this in conjunction with number 7? Because there's an amendment to this on number 7, and I'm wondering, how do these relate?
It's kind of, we're doing it at the same time. It's a budget amendment to fund the locks and hinges. At the same time, the contract's coming before you.
Okay.
To move forward, so they're both the same.
They're both the same. So, the, was this the funding that we approved before for the locks?
No, this, the funding before for the locks was just for, um, design and trying to, you know, figure out what to do. This is actually the installation.
But they were, but it gave the full amount of what would be needed, so that's why the number sounds the same.
So it is not, we're not increasing that, that initial funding request?
The initial funding was just for design only, to try to figure out what would work, and then they've tested it, and now this is what they've come back with, saying what will work and what it'll cost to install.
Okay. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I know you spoke on the amendment, that's why we took separately, too.
Do you want me to read it out?
Who made, who made the motion?
I did.
Was that for both?
Yes.
Yes. Are we good with that, Mr. Reed?
The initial motion to was for both 4 and 7?
It was for 4 and 7, but I did not state to put them together.
Let's just go ahead and cover 7, anyway.
Okay, we've got Budget Amendment 2-1. This is to appropriate funds to assist with the design, build of locks and hinges for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $3,644,097, and this will be coming out of the Fund Balance General Fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 6.
The recommendation is to award RFP 22-247 Consulting Services for Planning and Zoning Annual Contract. The request is being made in pursuant to Section 2-114 of Clayton County Code of Ordinance, purchasing, general purchasing methods. The recommendation is to award to the responsive, the responsive and responsible proponent whose proposal is determined to be the most advantageous meeting the specifications to CPL Architects, Engineers, Landscape Architect, and Surveyor DPC of Decatur, Georgia, in the amount of $613,600. Funding is available through the Community Development's General Fund. The evaluation, tabulation, summary, department's recommendation memo and agreement are attached for your review and information. This request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman on his designated need to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and to authorize the interim chief operating officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is that a motion? Is there a motion? If this recommendation does not pass, what is the next step?
So, to keep continuation of services, we have a PSA in line with the current contractor so they can continue to do the services, yes.
Okay, well, the request fails due to a motion. Thank you.
Our next item is item number 23. This is a board appointment for the library board.
All right, this board appointment is for Dr. Garb Carter, who resigned from the library board, existing term will expire November 2nd, 2024, Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna hold that, I'm not ready to appoint at this time.
Okay, hold that. Madam Clerk, next board appointment is to the License Review Board. Alicia Harvey's term on the License Review Board will expire on July 16, 2023. New term is four years, expiring on July 16, 2027. This is a Chairman Turner's recommendation, and my recommendation is to reappoint. All right, that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is the library board. Carolyn Boone's term on the library board will expire on July 21, 2023. New term is for three years, expiring on July 1, 21st, rather, on 2026. Commissioner Hamburg.
I would like to hold that, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, Ms. Clerk.
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Our next item is item number 26.
Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Chairman and Vice Chair, and board members. Just for sake of context, this public hearing item is for, to comply with state law, 368020, requires all motor vehicles owned or leased by the county to have on the front door a clearly visible decal or seal containing the name of or otherwise identifying such governmental entity. There are approximately 50 vehicles that do not have that, and in order for those vehicles to be exempt, there will be a need for a public hearing, and I believe that the vehicles are going to be pulled up here in just a second. Okay, yes, so those are the various vehicles, including the departments to whom those vehicles are being used, and should the board desire to keep those, then there will be a resolution that comes up at the meeting on the 18th that will list those vehicles, and this exemption only lasts for 12 months. And then, so next year, if the same vehicles are up for that same designation, we will bring that back in a year.
All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak in reference to the vehicle decal...
I would, Mr. Chairman.
You know your way, Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Members of the board, they're saying, or you're saying, that there's these vehicles under separate entities that we have to vote for them to be exempt. Now, what I would like to hear from any or all of you is why any county vehicle has to be exempt. Now, we can start with ever who feels appropriate to speak to me about this issue.
At the end of the day, is... Did somebody say something? Did you say something? At the end of the day, it's a board's vote on whether or not to allow certain vehicles to be exempt, and there are some times that I would, I'm not assuming, but that a vehicle would need to not necessarily have decals on it.
Mr. Chairman, that's quite vague there. I, I want the reasons why they should be exempt, because I need to know what my county employees are doing with their, our vehicles.
A decal does not mean that, whether there's a decal on it or not, does not indicate the full, the full designation of that, of that assignment to that person. So, we can, you know, I gave you a response, we can sit down and talk about it in further detail, but that's my response for now.
Let me ask this one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Without the decal on it, what about the tag on it? Will it say GV, government?
That's what they say now. All vehicles have government unless you're on public safety, law enforcement.
Attorney Reed, can, can you speak to what exemption means in this case, or...
The state law speaks to the exemption from having the decal on the side of the vehicles. That's what this exemption is related to, not to whether the vehicle's owned by the county or anything like that. It's just to the, whether there needs to be a clearly visible decal listed, affixed to both front doors of that vehicle.
So, do all of these vehicles have the GV tag? Do you know?
That I would have to either defer to Mr. Matarco or perhaps Mr. Stanford.
I, I would say, well, I don't want to speculate, but there's a number of vehicles that I see here, that's even the fire, as well as the communications and so forth. They all should have the GV government county tag.
So, you're telling me that certain vehicles by the fire department and the, uh, what other departments are gonna...
Those that you have listed now.
You have five of them. You can't list all five, too?
And all five of those, all five of those have GV, well, no, let me back up, not all five of them does, but, uh, there's...
Fire?
Fire, yes.
Okay, how many?
I don't know, certainly. There's a...
Fire, what's the next, Mr. Chairman, what's the next one?
That's a further, further conversation. Information Technology, Parks and Recreation. The list is on the board.
I can't read it. It's so damn small that nobody in here can read it.
Calm down, calm down. What we'll do is, we will print you out, a list. We will print you out a list.
That'll be fine.
Let's remain respectful.
Yes, sir. Doing everything I can to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You will print it out for me?
Yes, sir.
When can I pick it up?
Whenever somebody...
I have a copy for you.
Bam, there you go. Automatic, see how quick we are?
I love it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak? Come for it, ma'am.
Hello, I'm a resident of Unincorporated Forest Park, and I'm a resident...
Speaking to the mic, put the mic forward, please.
I'm a resident of Unincorporated...
State your name for us.
My name is Brenda Bathey, and I've been living there over 30 years, and my taxes has went up over $40,000 in three years, and...
Ma'am, this, this public hearing is for the decal situation. It's not, we have a separate public comment section that happens at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Now wait.
Does she sign up?
Uh, I don't think so. Did you sign up, ma'am?
Did he? Did he sign up?
That's all right. Okay, anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I do want to, I do have to echo that this is a public hearing, and I think we do need to know why is it that some of these do not have a decal at all? Even as a board member, I can understand about, and it's my understanding, I thought firing me at EMS had decals on the majority of their cars, if not all. I do know that some in law enforcement may or may not have, but I do have to honestly agree with the comment that was made by Mr. Garber. If it's a public hearing, honestly, to state, well, you're going to talk about it later, it's almost like it's in contradiction to having a public hearing, because a public hearing is to have information provided. So what I would respectfully ask is that we have enough copies, if we have to have, how many more public hearings do we have to have on this?
There's just one hearing that's required by, by law. In fact, Subsection B2 says, "Any public hearing shall be advertised one time in a legal org, excuse me, legal organ of the county, at least seven days prior to the hearing date," and the... organ of the county," at least seven days prior to the hearing date. And the, uh, resolution has to be held, uh, no more than fourteen days. Um, the hearing has to be held no more than fourteen days prior to the adoption of the resolutional ordinance.
So, then it will be coming back before, it's for a vote.
Correct, on, on July 18th.
Well, we're just getting that this list ourselves as board, and I honestly, it's six years being here, don't quite remember going through this. So, it seems like it might be the first time. Um, my, my remembrance may, at forty-something, might not be as good. But this code says, it came out in two thousand and six, that this law was out. Is it two thousand and six?
That's correct. This, and looking through the, this code section came up in looking at something else. And so, I realizing that, realizing that the county had not gone through this process, which is the reason why we are now going through this. Because, um, on recollection, I don't think the county has gone through this, uh, process prior.
So, you're saying that according to this, the state law has been there, but particularly vehicles for even some of those on the Board have been operations, operating since two thousand and six, and we did not go through the proper process according to the state law? Whose responsibility would that be to have known that?
The code actually looks like it was adopted back in nineteen eighty-one.
Oh, even further, because I was looking at the update of two thousand and six.
Right, and then, um, then there was an amendment in two thousand and one, and it looks like another amendment in two thousand and eight.
All right, thank you so very much. I will ask that we have a copy of this for people, um, because it is a hearing.
And it's still a matter of public record, so they can have anything they would like, uh, with no issue or problem. All right.
Mr. Chairman of the Board, I have, I do have a comment.
Hammerick.
We have this list, um, and my thing, thinking is, as long as we have the GV showing that it is a county vehicle, and I believe the GV does show what county...
It does.
It belongs to, and that's a government car, so...
Actually, it doesn't, if I may add, to add. It actually only says that it's registered in Clayton County. So, there are city vehicles that have GV on them as well. If there's a vehicle in any county, whether, whatever city it is, with all due respect, it has to have GV and then the county on it. It doesn't state oftentimes whether it's city. It maybe if they put the decal to the right, um...
It's to the left, and it says city, it says city or county on the tag.
Okay.
All right, any, anything else?
Yeah, I do, I do have one more. One, are there any cars that do not have to go through this process to not have a county tag on them as well?
State law.
Any, uh, every motor vehicle which is owned or leased by the county, or which has been purchased or leased by any public official or public employee with public funds is required to go through, to have the decal on the sides of the front door. The exception is what this process is.
Okay. What about law enforcement?
There is, any vehicle used for law enforcement or prosecution that is automatically exempted.
Okay, automatic, okay.
Mr. Chairman, once we do this, once we do this code, how, how long will this, this, how long will this cover us?
Twelve months.
For twelve months.
Twelve months, and then we'll come back every year and do it from there.
That's correct.
I just wanted to verify that, so everybody will know we will be doing this process once a year.
That's correct.
And that way, we can keep up and know, and, um, keep up with our logos and seals and things of that nature.
Thank you for catching this mistake, whoever did it.
Anything further? All right, well, this concludes. Come forward, sir.
I'm Eddie Boyd, uh, Ellinwood. Uh, now, there's probably hearing about the, uh, about the tags. I'm not, I'm not clear as to why we need an exemption, why we just don't do what the law states and just put the decal on the vehicles.
Great point.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's an excellent point, but at the same time, not all vehicles, in my opinion, need to have a decal on them, especially when they're displaying a tag that says it's a county-owned or a city-owned vehicle, or definitely has the destination of being a government vehicle.
In my opinion, I think we should just follow the law and just put the decals on the, on the vehicles.
But there's an exemption to the law, so it's not like we violating the law.
I'm not saying you violating, I'm just saying, if it's the law, just do it. It's simple.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I have a second chance?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Yes, he did, yes, he did. You have something that, that you wanna comment? If so, come to the podium. Well, wait, go ahead.
Sir?
Come to the podium, Mr. Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, humbly ask for a second question to this situation. We, the citizens, the taxpayers of this county, paid for a rebranding, and we paid a lot of money for this rebranding. And if our rebranding is to come out positive, I want to see that logo on any vehicle going anywhere to advertise Clayton County. Thank you. That's all I have to say about that.
All right, that concludes the public hearing at this time. Madam Clerk. Public comments.
Oh, use your vote.
My apologies. The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board, with a total time of twenty minutes for comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, not make any disparaging remarks, or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Orlando Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Commissioner, Chairman Turner. Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. I agree with Mr. Garber. I spoke about this about two years ago. I, where I sit, you can't see that monitor. Now, it's important to me, when you have, uh, the Finance Department come up here, and they're talking about our money, and we can't see it. But, anyway. During the June sixth meeting, Commissioner Franklin read to the Board their obligation and responsibility to fund the Sheriff's Department, but with no accountability or oversight. She failed to mention the mismanagement and corruption, nepotism, and cronyism in the Sheriff's Department. She ended with the phrase, "If you wanna hide information from people, put it in the book. If you wanna hide the rules from Commissioners, put it in their Code of Conduct." Section two, dash thirty-seven, dash oh-nine, dash C, quote, "Communicate in respectful, professional manner with and about fellow Board members." Commissioner Anderson told Chairman Turner, "Watch your mouth. You're getting a little smart. You picked the wrong one." Last July, she told her own constituent, "Go sit down. I'm not the one." Commissioner Franklin, last year you were interested in nepotism with the, with a county employee. You didn't ask Sheriff Levon Allen if he hired his mother and paid her eighty-five thousand dollars in salary, and she has no law enforcement background. The practice of claiming to have standards which one's own behavior doesn't conform is the true definition of hypocrisy. This is a place of business, and business should be conducted in a businesslike manner.
Thank you, sir. Gwen Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Gwen Gooden, uh, Unincorporated, Clayton County. Chairman Turner, Commissioners, it was so embarrassing to watch Districts One and Three Commissioners utter disrespect of our Chairman in our June sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. They have broken Clayton County Board of Commissioners Code of Conduct, Article Two, Section two thirty-seven, dash zero-one, the cor, to treat fellow Board members with decency and respect, as well as two thirty-seven, dash zero-six, C, work with other Board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during the discussion and resolutions of issues at Board meetings. Commissioner Franklin constantly states operations is the cause of all mishaps and problems in the county, which is not the reality. Her claims of being about the people's business does not reflect the needs of our District Three or Clayton County as a whole. Lastly, due to the inexperienced Sheriff and his predecessor, our jail is worse than Fulton County's jail. We continue to throw good money after bad, which has not accomplished our goal to clean it up. Neither District One or District Three Commissioners have the skill set to run this county. Thank you.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Unincorporated, Clayton County. I think I have spoke, uh, spoke on the decorum and, uh, etiquette before. And unfortunately, unfortunately, I was in a meeting last week, uh, on the Six West Project Airport City, and they were international investors. Surprised with them coming over here, they do their homework. They were confused about the fact that, uh, Six West was in Clayton County, Six West is in Fulton County. However, they were very concerned about the decorum and the etiquette, uh, uh, that this Board presents from time to time. And it really affects the trickle-down effect. If, if Six West take off, then there'd be a trickle-over effect into the county. We have got to, uh, conduct ourselves and articulate our positions, or if there's an opportunity to do it behind closed doors, let's do it behind closed doors, because at the end of the day, we are on the worldwide way up, and we being watched all over the world. So, if we want our candidate to move forward in the spirit of excellence, we must conduct ourselves in a proper fashion. Thank you for your time.
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the podium to the next legitimate speaker. Thank you.
David Hamerick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, I would like to know if you could give us any updates?
I'm sorry, state your name.
David Hamerick, Clayton County. Could you give us any updates on the Roman situation, what steps are being done to get our money back in a future meeting or now? Uh, I would actually like to hear from each Commissioner if they voted for or against, reasons why. Uh, if they voted for it, that this company would invest that much money into Clayton County when our average income is forty-five thousand, Henry is sixty-six thousand, Fayette is eighty thousand dollars, whereas we have fifty-six thousand people in a poverty level out of two hundred ninety-three thousand. I would like to know what makes you, or why wouldn't it make economic sense or business sense for a company to come in and invest this much money into the county when most of the people who live here cannot afford it? Also, for the record, the store over there was a Bruno's Store, not an Engels'. And its sister store is Adventure Outdoors. Up in Smyrna, you can also see one at Cascade and Five Forks Trickem. I know, I was a co-manager there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jody Chambers.
My name, my name is Jody Chambers, and I am a resident of District Three. Felicia Franklin is my Commissioner, and I just recently read, I was totally floored when I read that Ms., uh, Franklin is running for the Chair Commissioner seat, and I was just totally taken by that. I don't see how you even wanted to consider to do something like that. You're a liar.
Listen, no, 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 we're not going down that road. We are not going to be disrespectful to any Commissioner.
I didn't know that was disrespectful, okay. But she told tales, okay? I'll, I'll dress it up. All right?
It's still a point of order.
Anyway, I think you need to take a look at yourself and maybe consider doing, doing something else. Um, I am so glad that you are stepping down from District Three. Uh, there are other candidates that are running for that seat, and so, I didn't sign off on the DOI, but I'm declaring my candidacy today. So, um, the hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifteen thousand people that voted for me, a thousand and fifteen people that voted for me, plus their friends, they're not gonna vote for you. So, good luck.
Thank you, ma'am. Wayne Madden.
Uh, good afternoon. Wayne Madden, uh, Clayton County. Uh, that lady just made me change my mind about what I was gonna say. Nobody can determine who's qualified. If Donald Trump can become President of these United States, everybody's qualified, including Chris's dog. So, this is my concern. All of y'all don't have to do it. Somebody, please roll back the millage rate for taxes. Make my taxes less. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher Gallagher.
How you doing, Commissioners? Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. Uh, I lived down here for a very long time. I've watched Atlanta grow since nineteen seventy-two there, being a beautiful town there. But lately, I drive through every other day to downtown Atlanta, and all the graffiti I see over all the interstate signs, there's even cameras there monitoring the highway there. It's, they don't see them climbing out onto the signs, spending like two hours there spray painting these signs, buildings, the walls there, and I see that's starting to creep down towards Clayton County. This graffiti there, because I recognize a lot of the names I say, Atlanta, do we have a plan in place to deal with this as it moves down towards our area? All this unsightly graffiti is what I was wondering.
Well, it's a police matter, but yeah, it's real dangerous for them even to get out there and do that. Uh, most state routes and interstates are, uh, governed or ran by GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, but something to be vigilant of, and the police, uh, and even the sheriff who operate out there on those interstates, just need to be aware of that.
Yeah, because we have such a beautiful county there, and I just don't wanna see like Atlanta. I'm sorry, it's a nicer, or it just looks so terrible when you drive through there. I mean, people get a bad, you know, perspective of it, not want them see, starting thinking like Clayton County that way. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Boyd.
Eddie Boyd, Clayton County. About a year ago, uh, I'm, came and made a comment in reference to people dumping household trash, right? And it's happening all over again. Uh, last year, I went all over picking up the trash, you know, and other community members, right? Uh, I'm not at that place anymore, and I want to know what the Board is going to do about this household trash that people are dumping in the middle of the night, because it's a problem, right? We had a situation in our own subdivision where some... We had a situation in our own subdivision where somebody came and put trash, not in the trash can, but next to the trash can. And it can cause a dispute if somebody's coming outside their home and someone's putting their household trash, telling what is, what is in that, and a cat can get in it and this and the other. And it could cause a police matter, and it could trickle down. Uh, and then it makes our county dirty. This morning, when I was going through, uh, parts of Rex, household trash here, household trash there, because people don't have trash pickup. Either they can't afford it or don't wanna pay for it, but it's dirtying up our beautiful county. And I think we need to come together and do something about it, right? Uh, I played my part, right? I'm willing to do more, but yeah, we need to come together as collective to keep Clayton clean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, on litigation and...
Hold on a second.
You have Alfred Dixon in the court.
Okay, thank you.
So you can recognize.
Okay.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, on litigation and personnel.
Litigation personnel. Okay, before I take a vote or a motion to go into executive session, I just wanna recognize Alfred Dixon, City Councilman of City of Jonesboro. Thank you for being with us this evening, sir. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Well, two, um, points of privilege.
Okay, hold on a second. So your point of privilege is dealing with any conditions of this, uh, room or if dressing anybody's, uh, attitude or, or conduct?
No, I was just going to ask for everyone to pray for our Assistant Librarian Director as she lost her son. And she would be putting, um, bearing him this, uh, Saturday. And she reached out to me and wanted to make the Board aware of that. He was very young. Also want to continue to keep the mother in prayer, who I spoke with, who lost her son recently as well in District Three. That was my point of privilege. So if we could just keep those in prayer, uh, mothers are grieving and, um, we just need to keep one another in prayer. Thank you so much for that point of privilege.
Is there a motion to go to the executive session for, uh, litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I, I haven't finished. Litigation and personnel, right? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening. All right, is there a motion? Do we can lean?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I want you to hit me.
I'll, I'll, I'll second. I'll second the motion.
That was a good one.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Hey, y'all at least had the buzzers in the school door, right?
Ms. Merritt.
Good evening again. Um, so Finance Department is requesting to bring in, um, to hire an accounts payable, accounts receivable manager at a step thirty dash twelve, I'm sorry, thirty dash eleven. Um, the previous manager that left was at a thirty dash twelve. This will be a savings for the current budget of one thousand three hundred and three dollars. The new, this candidate is, um, well above all the other candidates that we interviewed and extremely talented, and that's my request.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
None.
Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not used to this personnel stuff. Okay, so, um, we have a HUD supplement that was originally issued to the Director of Community Development. Once that, um, the HUD department was moved under the new Grants Administrator, that was still given to him in error for a few months, so we are asking to take fund balance to repay the HUD grant for that money per the HUD grant, and we are also asking that, um, the new Grants Administrator, Linda Boswell, be entitled to that thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars annually from HUD.
As a supplement.
And backdated to March eighteenth.
As a supplement.
As a supplement. Nope, not pensionable.
All right. Those, uh, those in favor, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Franklin. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Yeah, get up quicker, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed.
I was gonna suggest that you take those separately, since they're two separate items, but that's fine.
Which ones?
Let's take them together. We can't take them...
No, I was saying that you had two items involving two different people.
Oh.
I was gonna suggest taking them separately, but...
You talking about what she just read?
Right.
We did take them separate.
No, you took them all together. That's fine. Because you all, because it passed. All right.
Got it.
Uh, I have, you want me to take all three of these settlements?
It's okay to take all three this time. I can take all of these. Let's take all three.
Okay, I have three settlements all relating to the same incident. The first is, um, Maria Gomez, and it involves an accident that occurred on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-two in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. The second is for Blanca Gomez Benuelos, and that is in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. And the last is, uh, for the same claimant, Blanca, as legal guardian of her daughter, Montserrat Ramirez Gomez, in the amount of one thousand three hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by, yeah, motion made by Commissioner Franklin. Is there a second?
Second. He already seconded it.
All right. Second was made by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions on any of the three? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. Oh, you, is there a second?
That's a pretty color too, Commissioner.
Opposed, it's unanimous.